Yeah, there you go. See you can drive around Friday.
The old school way. Yeah, come on Lauren.
Come on Lauren. What's up?
I know.
I hate the paper, but then I can't, you know, it's hard to make notes.
It's easier. I get it.
I was just excited to have a case.
This is exciting.
I got this case done kind of late because I told you guys I'm like coming up one woman planning show right now.
Okay.
So this got a little...
It's alright this time.
A little later. Our new planner that starts on Monday, next our new planner too.
Oh great.
Helping out with this board and other stuff, so exciting.
Cool.
Where's the new planner from?
She's from the private sector. She was working for like a small scale residential developer.
Sandra, I haven't seen you around the neighborhood lately. Are you traveling?
No, my wife has been traveling. I feel like I've been around the neighborhood a ton, like outriding my bike and walking my dog. Yeah, to keep myself busy because my wife's been out. But yeah, no, I feel like I haven't come by and seen your garage door open or anything to pop in and be like, where do you do it?
Where's your wife? Where's she been traveling to? Is she business, all business?
Very much pleasure, but not really. She's been visiting her mom and helping her move into an independent living apartment.
Oh, that's awesome. That's tough.
But it's in upstate New York, which is the hardest part because we're not there. And so we're trying to...
What part?
She's about an hour outside of Syracuse.
Oh, that's our copy for...
Do you know where Colgate University is? I have a digital copy, so I'm good.
My grandma had some relatives who were all from like Rochester, Buffalo, Rochester.
Hello.
Lauren, are we having any public comments that you know of?
Yeah, so hopefully they will.
She had to go through Colgate.
Yeah, well, no, when we were like struggling, we're like, okay, just finding a doctor period that would like work for us. Because there are doctors, but like we want to have some selection because maybe prior bad experiences or whatever. You just get what you get in that space. What is today? Today is the 6th. My wife just dropped off her bike at Golden Optimist Club, so now we are two bike donating family.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. I haven't been there. I was traveling, but I'll be good Tuesday.
I haven't tried to convince her because she doesn't, she just doesn't like that bike as much anymore. But she's like not ready to make the investment in a new bike. And I'm like, you don't have to get crazy.
We got some nice ones and they're not, you don't have to go crazy with price.
That's what I told her. I was like, you don't have to go crazy.
Although right now we've been kind of cleaned out because it's summer and everybody's there. But if you keep coming, you have something nice.
Yeah.
I hate to see people bring in bikes and then like give up biking. It's like...
No, so we've been writing like our e-bikes and she wants to like be in the market for a more like actual aggressive like mountain bike.
Oh yeah.
And so I'm like, sure, cool, do that. I was like, in the meantime, like if you're not going to ride this one anymore. I was like, I brought my bike and Suzie was like, oh, I know, perfect. Like this woman doing the triathlon and all that. I was like, that's the point of it. And I just listened to this amazing podcast. And it was all about the intersection of transportation and how empowering bicycles can be for humans. And how that actually has a huge intersection within social equity in providing transportation methods to people who wouldn't do them otherwise. And as somebody who's like not a cyclist and not comfortable riding, I built my, am the worst offender from a single occupant passenger vehicle.
Great.
But I've been focusing on my e-bike because most of my stuff is in town, right? I'll take them. Thank you. You're just coasting.
I don't mind on a longer ride because doing one ride is a two blocks that are nasty at the end. But on a short ride, I'm like...
Food and drink.
I'm thinking about the e-bike. What kind do you have?
We have the pens because they have a frickin'...
Good for you.
So yeah, so we've been writing our e-bikes this time. And for me, who's like you to cycle.
So are we ready to start?
We are.
Okay. So roll call? Do roll call first?
Yep.
All right. Oran.
Here.
Next.
Here.
John Key.
Here.
Rooney.
Here.
Butler.
Here.
Stuttsman.
Here.
Kernan. Anne Murphy. All right, we have a forum.
Yay. So do I get a motion to approve the agenda? Agenda from, is that this agenda or last week's agenda? This agenda. Okay. Okay, motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Second. All right. And approval of the minutes of March 7th, 2022? Motion to approve?
Make sure to take a vote when you...
I'll move to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor, sir?
All in favor?
Say aye.
Aye.
Sorry. Thanks Lauren. Thanks for walking us through that. And then we, I asked if we had any public comment. We don't, other than...
Other than the case.
Other than the case, okay. So it looks like we'll move on to regular business. So Lauren, shall I pass this off to you?
Absolutely. All right, thank you so much. So we have one case before you this evening. The address is 1106 Washington Avenue. It is not in a historic district, but it's a commercial building. It's over 50 years old and is in our kind of historic downtown area. The building is, it's been known as lots of things over the years, but most currently, or most recently, it's been known as the Oddfellows fraternal place of business, I guess. I'm sure it's Hall or whatever it might be. And then the bottom floor, most recently a florist shop and antique store. It was originally constructed in 18, around 1870s and it was renovated a few times, most notably in 1930 and then in the 1960s. And its current facade is that of the 1960s. So it has sort of a modern 1960s mid-century facade. The applicant is proposing to renovate the facade to eliminate the 1960s makeover and return the facade to a look that is more contemporary interpretation with brick and glass. That's most closer to an earlier version of the facade, most notably the facade that was present around the turn of the 20th century. So when they start preservation boards, looks at these cases, they look at the the design standards general and staff found in its analysis that all the applicable design standards for this project were met. Most notably matching the facade setback and sort of form along Washington Avenue. Also the new facade materials and windows are consistent with other buildings on Washington Avenue. So it does not detract from some of the historic buildings that do surround it. It is complimentary. Staffs, with staff's review, we did make one noted change in the facade, which I will just show you on the camera. So this is the proposed facade. As you can see, next door is the building at 1100 Washington, which is currently being renovated. And you can see here, the facade is a mixture of dark and medium gray scale and metal colors to give the facade some depth and contrast along the street scheme. So that was staff's one change is to introduce a lighter color into that facade to sort of give it a little more presence along the street. And with that, staff does recommend approval. The applicant is here. If you have any questions about their changes and what they're planning to do. And I think this is a public hearing, so if there are members of the audience that wish to speak about this case, you may can also have them come up and speak. Thank you.
So do we have any comments from the...
Thank you. My name is Garrett Baum with Urban Frontier and also the property, I'm the property owner and that's under a separate entity called Aljor. Thrilled to be here. Last time I was here was when we were working on 1100 Washington. So we had purchased the old mortuary as well and redid that. I hope you all like how it's turning out. It's a labor of love for sure. We thought when we purchased it that the mortuary had put a skin over the top of the existing facade. And when we got surprised that they hadn't, that there was nothing under there, that we had to go back to the archives and look at old newspaper articles that were hand drawn of what the building was. Although it's nearly impossible to get to an 1860s or 70s building, I think it looks good and I hope you do also. Similarly with this building, we purchased it last year and you know, the brick that was used in the 60s, our opinion, not the most attractive and the, call it patio cover that they have there. So we went back into the archives and looked at what historically the building looked like. And did the best we could to get it as similar as it was. And that's where we have that, the windows above are, you know, had been redone as well. And we're going to take those back with the arches above them and do some things to bring the character back to what it was last century. Happy to answer any questions that you have. We don't have any tenants yet. You know, right now the idea is to go in and find what we don't know inside the walls that have been changed for the last hundred years. That hopefully everything's still structurally sound and then get to work if all of you are in favor of it.
Do you have any idea how tall the elevator override will be?
The elevator.
Elevator override?
You know, I think we're talking about removing the elevator. So...
Do you have to provide any access to the second floor?
We will be installing the elevator.
Did we decide we're doing that? So it'll be a new elevator, but will there be anything over the top?
Not that I've seen in our experience.
At one point we talked about moving a location from where it was. It's a very old, I actually wrote in it, wouldn't recommend it. So it sounds like we're keeping it.
Is it a hydraulic elevator?
I don't remember what they have now, but it'll be a machineryless traction elevator.
That's a good question.
We didn't, with our handle and everything, we didn't consider that setback. So we're not saying that from Washington.
There's a bit of a parapet there, right, too?
Yeah.
The facade, yeah. It's hard to see it.
On the lower level, all the way across, there are the gray panels. Are those solid panels or are those glasses? Is that a gray window? What's down there?
The upper band is not glass and solid and the lower band is glass.
So it's just a gray tint? Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. We'll look forward to it.
Is there any other comment?
I guess I could say that I didn't think about it till just now, that a four picture would have been nice. But I'm sure everybody knows what the building looks like currently, so.
I pulled one up on Google Maps. I want to see it.
It looks way better. I think we're in agreement on that one.
It's a description, the patio brick look or whatever it was.
It's also a very interesting brick that they used in the 60s. It's almost a scraped, it's not...
Oh, is that like ribbed or whatever?
It's a ribbed, it's a...
I don't know if that's the term.
Odd sort of unattractive brick. I don't know what they're thinking then, but maybe that was the style. Okay.
Scariest, do you know who's going to live there?
Well, we, there were businesses that were interested in 1100 that we will likely reach out to. But we saw primarily a land developer and when we sell land, we, I love restoring these old historic buildings. We have some in Lodo as well, during Golden and some other places. It's not, it's looked at so much as an investment. In Lodo, so many of the buildings have been scraped and torn down. Obviously with this one, we see what happened in the 60s. So we typically go forward and sort of fix the building up first, find out what the problems are inside and take that, get everything up to code. And then we seek out tenants. So we don't, we don't know who would go in yet. Although some have expressed interest since we purchased the building, but we've sort of put them on hold until we figure it out. I think it's most likely that we'll have office on the second floor. Most of the inquiries we've had are for office. And then on the first floor, I think it's likely to be some sort of retail. I don't know yet. The antique store that's there and been there for a while, we actually extended their lease so they can stay in a little longer. They've expressed an interest in staying. Whether or not they do or not, I don't know. It worked more as a co-op, so it's not just one single business that has it. So, but we told them that we have conversations with them once we got through things. So don't know.
One kind of random question. Did that building used to have a little sign for the IOOF on it?
It's still there.
So Oddfellows.
What's that?
Oddfellows.
The Oddfellows, I know. It's just such an intriguing thing to see when you walk down the street. I wondered if you could incorporate the Oddfellows in here somehow.
Yes, so we, you know, it was interesting when we were talking to them, there were, I think there were three left, maybe?
There's what?
Three of the members of the organization, the Oddfellows. They had buildings around the state. I think all of them were in their 90s. We asked if they wanted to continue or have anything and they didn't. But that would be an interesting idea to maybe have a plaque.
Service clubs. There's so many different service clubs and they're dwindling, but they're, and some are strong. But it's kind of cool to think that there is that whole, just look at that. I always was intrigued by that little sign.
I don't know if any of you have been in it, but the second floor is quite interesting. The doors and the rooms have little poles where you, you know, to not get in. It's an interesting history. It is strange.
I think the museum did acquire a lot of the building's signage and other, other things. So the museum did get those items and has them.
Some of them, right? But the IOOF I think is still above on there. So I don't know if they want to...
Right, incorporated somewhere, maybe in a doorway or something, some little way to just trigger a thought of, what was that? And people might look it up and see what it was.
That's what I did this weekend in February for here. I was like, what even, what?
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? And no more, if there's no public comment?
Well, I'm not, no Mister Gardner has a public comment.
Although you wrote quite a good endorsement.
No, I, we both suggested this very thing to them. Yeah, it's what I call, like to call an assimilation, which is take the, if the building's not restorable to its most important historic character, then you take the modern facade and then you translate it to an image of the, a more original one and thereby bring out its historic character more. And I do know that brings out the interesting philosophical question of, well, what do you save of the mid-century storefronts? Under that, and that's why I tend to restrict that in my judgment to those which are pretty nondescript and which the evidence doesn't really point to being important. This design is actually more important than the Oddfellows own history with the building than the current facade is, which was a modernization from 1960. It's not to dismiss their history beyond that, but the most important history is before that. Them and the Rebecca's, which are, they're the female Oddfellows who have an extensive history there too.
The Rebecca's?
The Rebecca's, that's what they're called.
They're the lady partners. I told you guys.
With a K. And we had one of the first of their lodges in the state and I had the pleasure of presenting to them twice in that hall, which is how I got familiar with the inside and whatnot. And the building was built in 1871. It's one of our older territorial eras. It was originally known as Jefferson Hall and its second name, which I don't think you guys have known because I spaced out telling you for inexplicable, inexcusable reason, it was the Cordask Block. It's the, and I got to correct this from what I told you, second oldest intact home of the Jefferson County government that still exists. I forgot that the Loveland Block on the, on the same block, they were there earlier during, when we were capital. But this one was home of the county government from 1874 through 1878. And if you wanted to use the name of the Cordask Block on it, imagine I am the historical commission would have no objection to that. But it was also, it was after that known as the Kelly Block, after Dr. James Kelly, who was one of its builders and had his drugstore there in its later years. And another fraternal order it's highly associated with is the Masons, who still meet at their own lodge in Golden. This is their second longest home. The one they had before their current one, which they built, finished in 1950. And they, they and the Oddfellows weren't exclusive of each other. They met in the same home at the same time, along with the Rebecca's. The place began its history as a public hall and that's permeated throughout its history. And the three buildings together, they do share a unique piece of common history, which has been fun to point out. That's on the, their shared upper floor in the 1870s is the Avenue Hotel. And I, at some point, I'm going to delve into George Bacon's earlier history here and say, okay, just what was the company named when he founded it that became Daniels and Fisher and so on? But his most prominent hotel is the Ray, or the Beaumont of the Ray. And that one speaks for itself. Wish the Bell Vista Golden was still here. But this design is a good assimilation of it. The upper four windows would have been like tall double hings for upper four, but I mean, like I said, it's a translation. And the original storefront below it was Golden's first iron storefront. It would have been the color of unpainted iron. And it would have been, like I said, a central arched door in brick flanked by two iron and very glassy brick storefronts. They did have panels beneath them, which are essentially just plain, two rectangular panels beneath. It's nothing really ornate, but it was quite an advancement for our town because it was our first iron storefront where you could have the big glass windows and everything. But you have the preserved elements of the second one in your corner building. The ironwork that remained from both of their, both of their mortuary buildings is the original from each of them. The 1872 for the north and the 1877 for the south. I know that from their company names, one of which is publicized in the transcript. And on the north building, that name can only come from around 1872, when I looked it up. So it's great you preserved the ironwork. These buildings were advancements of their time. And if you ever find any mysterious structural cracks, like in the upper regions or whatnot, that might be, that might be earthquake damage from 1887. We discovered that in Jarvis Hall up on the hill. But it was more agitated on the upper regions. That was an earthquake that measured 6.4, they estimate, on Richter scale that Golden experienced. Yeah, if there's something mysterious and unexplained and water doesn't seem to have caused it, you might think of that as a possible explanation. Especially it seems to have been there a very long time. And, but this is a pretty good rendition of it. And as for any historical names, well, you have plenty to choose from. And to me, I tend to call buildings by their most prominent historical name that I can document. However, to me, it's always like, you have that name and you have alternate jerseys they can wear, which are all totally historically valid. My family's own acquaintance block gets alternate as the Sputnut Shop and we're not about to disavow that one. That'd be very bad. It's beloved to us and everyone else. So anything Lauren can help in the future, I'd love to. Just have fun.
Well, Rick, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I always appreciate your in-depth analysis.
If you have any questions, I can...
So I guess that closes the public comment and we turn to discussion with our staff here. So any, any thoughts, questions? Anything you want to share?
I do have something I would like to share. Thank you for, thank you for phrasing it that way. I'm like, definitely not a question, guys. It's just an opinion. But thank you very much for the extensive research and detail that you provided. Because like I said, it sent me on this other journey to understand all of these things. But one of the things that we've been talking about is what are we preserving and what history are we preserving? And specifically, we would mention like that now we're aging into that 1960s potentially being available to us as something to preserve. But your information helped tie in the more significant, I would say, relationship with the original facade of the building. So for me, that was really helpful and I appreciate that.
Thanks, Sandra. Any other comments?
Just, it's going to be a nice set of buildings right there.
Can't wait.
Nice continuity between.
Are you also doing the other building?
1100?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did that. We're almost finished.
Oh, great. So I'll share. My architectural thesis was on this exact type of work. And it was on a city, a Corleone, Idaho, where it was a renovation of, the facades had been destroyed by years and years of upgrades and renovations that made them look really bad. And this is exactly what my thesis proposed, doing this kind of work, where it was a translation, as Rick said, of maybe not exactly what it looked like back then, but an improvement over, over everything. So you got a big fan here over what you're doing here. And when I saw the initial pictures, I was, well, this is better than what it was before. It is much better. It's a great, this is the kind of work that we really appreciate seeing where it's actually, you make an effort to make it more like what it should be here. I think, and I really do think you've made an improvement. I really appreciate the work you've done on this thing. I think it's great.
Yeah, I will also note, one of staff's favorite features is the removal of the white awning in front.
Yeah.
This is all the other things.
Eleven awning free stretch here.
The awning, the awning was on the list for me if that didn't go. I didn't know how it was revealed on it.
So anything else? So I guess we, does somebody want to make a draft motion of approval of this? Anybody? Can you read?
No, we have to, we have to, somebody has to say, I'll make a draft motion. In the matter of case, HPB 22-02, a request for a COA certificate of design review and a finding compatibility for the proposed facade change located at 1106 Washington Avenue. I move that the Historic Preservation Board adopt the findings, recommendations, and conditions found in the attached resolution of HPB 22-02 for approval.
Do we have a second for that?
I'll second.
And everybody who votes to approve, say aye?
Aye.
I have to do a roll call for this one, actually.
Okay, sorry.
All right, Stuttsman.
Yes.
Butler.
Aye.
Rooney.
Yes.
John Key.
Yes.
Next.
Yes.
Anne Oran.
Yes.
All right.
Good work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
And thanks, Rick.
Thank you. Yeah, 100%. My first question was like, why get rid of the 60s? I understand aesthetically, there's no accounting for taste, but I was like, that's something. Is that another thing? And it really helped pull it together. To understand like this, this is why this matters in particular to us. And I was like, okay. I appreciated being taken on that journey.
Yeah, just for the new folks, these buildings that are over 50 years old that are not in historic, sometimes I'll bring them to you for sort of consultation. So while this wasn't, it didn't really hold much weight. It's just a way to get a public review on something that is really visible on Washington Avenue. So.
Thank you all for, we don't...
So, thank you all for, we don't do too many of these, so it's fine when we get to do them on Washington.
Well, they did a really good job.
They did. I think it's exciting, yeah.
Yeah. To see, especially now that there, you can start to see the headway that's been happening on this north one, yeah.
Downtown Golden is not historic district.
Right. Which is wild, but...
We do have historically designated buildings throughout downtown.
Yeah, they're individual structures. And there's downtown development design guidelines that the Planning Commission has, but anyway.
It's just nice when somebody realizes they need to try to stick with the character of the environment there, and they did it on, on their own, so we didn't have to point out what was wrong.
What were you going to say? I hope they stay true to their comment about really encouraging business to move in, because the flower shop is delightful, the antique shop brings people in all the time. It's, it's a constant consumer, it's a destination when people come to Golden. And, I mean, that was my only concern, is that it turns into an office building that's eight to five and closed at night, that really lost that whole block.
Yeah. That's great to hear that they're working with the existing antique shop and maybe expanding. And I think in the...
I hope so.
In the plans, they said something about having two separate entrances, so they could have two vendors in the space below potentially. But yeah, I hear what you're saying about it being an engagement zone instead of a locked shuttered zone.
Well, they're obviously developing...
Five and close at night and turn the lights off at 5 o'clock, yeah. She did.
Yeah, they're obviously developing it for a profit, so it sounds like they haven't even leased the, the facility yet. So it could be anything.
I've heard rumors, but, you know, nothing I would, nothing that is...
But this is also a good example of, you know, a lot of what we do, it has to be motivation that they want to do the right thing. And we can, we have carrots and sticks and things, but carrots...
You got to let them do what they want there. You know, I wouldn't be surprised for some kind of food service or bar.
Well, to that point, I mean, I think the existing tenants are frustrated by that, and that's a completely separate area of government, but there are like some sort of limitation, because like, if we're funneling extremely and only by profit, that's where the profit is, and then what do we exchange in our community fabric, like you're talking about with destination and like this co-op situation when people locally engage? Like unfortunately, and that's outside of our purview here, but it's nice to know that maybe they're hopefully going to hold true to what they were saying.
Okay, so Lauren, I guess the last thing is staff updates and are one issue that we want to address for the meeting.
Yeah. So I thought we would hold off on chair and vice chair elections until our next meeting. I think we'll have our full folks back, but, so if you don't mind, just waiting another month for that. The other thing that we need to discuss is our July, July meeting. Our July meeting is, would fall on July 4th. I don't think anybody would like to come in on the evening of July 4th.
You won't have a quorum.
No, thank you.
And meet. So the alternate date that I have procured for us is July 14th, which is a Thursday in this chamber. We do have cases, because the moratorium has been lifted, and we do have some, we have several projects in the historic district that are waiting to get on your agenda. So I'm hopeful that if it's agreeable to you all and you vote to set that meeting for July 14th at 6:30 PM, we can advertise that for our next meeting, if that all works for your schedule.
Does anybody here have an issue with that, or?
I will not. I'll be out of town on the 14th, though, but I'm only one human, of many humans.
There's two, two humans so far.
Yeah. All right.
I don't know about the rest.
Well, I, you know, you know, it's five for a quorum, so if we only have two out, then we should be fine.
Do you want us to take a vote on it?
Yeah, if you could vote and set the meeting.
Sure. Okay. So, can I make the motion? I motion that we change the July 4th meeting to the July 14th?
6:30 PM.
Yeah. PM.
Second.
Got a second? Votes? Everybody agrees, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We agree.
Thank you.
And hopefully we can get Nico and the gang back.
Yeah, Nico promised he would be back. Sent me a long enough bell. And then the only other update I have for you is that, well, two quick updates. The first one is we are wrapping up the ethnography with, so it's really exciting. We are, it's taking a little longer to wrap it up than we initially thought, but it's, I just met with the consultants today, so we're, we hope to have our final version out sometime next month, and we'll be doing some community meetings, potentially our engagement. We're kind of working on a rollout plan. We're not just going to, we will post, you obviously get access to it, but we're also working with the museum on some more engagement, engaging type activities around the ethnography, so be on the lookout for that. And then we do have the new zoning code, which passed in, at the end of May. So we are open for business as far as the moratorium being lifted. We do have probably about a half dozen or more houses in, within our historic districts that are looking for renovations, so we do expect to have a busy couple of months.
So we're going to have a little longer session coming up here, couple of...
So these will be, so that, that's all I have for, for you all, and we will do elections next month, hopefully.
Okay. Great.
All right.
Anything else?
If you've motioned, if you've motioned to adjourn, if you...
Yeah, all right. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Everybody say aye?
Aye.
That was a quick one.
Wow, record.
But we'll be going, we'll be going, see, Paul, we can, yeah, when Suzie was doing it, it took a lot of...
Oh, yeah.
Just, just a lot better. It was better, more thorough when you were doing it.